Angie Pahn.
Don Patton.
Here.
Dana Ferguson.
Here.
Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rocky Preston.
Shout out to them.
Talia Dye.
Here.
Norman Fraser.
He said he would leave the, leave the way.
Gary Furr.
Here.
Sunny Hall.
She's here.
Phil Melton.
Here.
Doug Bickers.
Here.
Michelle Hill.
Here.
Jenny Picken.
Here.
Roseanne Ward.
Here.
Daryl Peeks.
Here.
Ronnie Hopper.
Here.
Mary Powers.
Here.
Ward Plant.
Here.
I have a quorum. Close the line out on clouds. Excuse me, I want this back. Would you come up? We're going to turn this over to Mr. Donna. She has a presentation given, so she can get her. She drove a long way, we've got to drive all the way back to Murfreesboro. Let's get her in, get her out.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, I definitely appreciate it, I don't know what to say. Do whatever you like.
Thank you for what you do for us.
I want to thank you all for allowing me to come in and be a part of helping this county keep better financially well. And I have to say, this is a county that keeps on giving. With all the efforts that have been put forth by your, your different departments, you on the county commissioners that have brought things to me as well. This just keeps growing, it's getting better for the bottom line, and I'm very pleased to be a part of that. Thank you. What I'm going to do tonight is give you an update on where we are with recoveries since we began this, and talk to you about one action that is needed tonight. Okay, I'll move down, I just need to. This first section here, first I want to point out that the recoveries that we undertook and began for Benton County started being realized in June 2018. They were not, not everything up here pending, but that's when some of our first recoveries came in. So, when we give the 20-year life expectancy or currents of them, some of them have already been in place for a couple of years, so keep that in mind. You'll see the new totals down here, those are current as of today. We have two new ones that came along since I updated in February. That would be some hotel motel tax and the interest and penalties that came with that. Some of it was one-time monies, you have reoccurring monies that come in, and you're looking at about $310,000 going on, continuing to come in with that. And there are discussions ongoing with others, one of those we'll talk about tonight. You also have three that are starred up here, those are things that will probably find additional findings, but nothing of significance, but I did want to let you know that given what they are, there will be things that will trickle in or may come in yearly. I'll set that up with the mayor's office so that they can file those appropriate forms, that's something I can step out of and not be involved with from here going forward. It's just routine, they'll be able to start doing from there. What I want to talk to you tonight about is, as we discussed in February, and you voted on in March, was to request the General Assembly to change your private act to allow the state parks to begin collecting the local hotel motel 5% tax. Your private act was missing the specific definition of a state, of a state entity in order to do that. State required it, that was something that the AG ruled on many years ago, and it specifically required the state to be named in that. This is standard in a lot of other private acts, so it was nothing new, we were taking to the county, I mean to the state, it was just bringing you in line with what the standard is in private acts for most of the times, and it helped you now realize this money. That passed the General Assembly, you have to give your House and Senate members credit. As you know, everything went crazy in the General Assembly this year, they just, they addressed just the budget, reset us, and then came back in and did as little as possible to get everybody back out, back into their home business, which meant they were going to take up little to no county business. The last session, I called both your Senate member and your House member, and in 12 hours they got the bill passed and ready to go to the governor for signature. So they did a Herculean effort to make that happen for this county, and you owe them a big thank you when you see them. That bill was signed by the governor on the 15th. Now that it is signed, the action that you need to take is a resolution accepting what you asked them to do. That's going to change your private act. I've already contacted the entity with the department, the department that handles parks, she's waiting on the resolution, we'll get that sent up tomorrow after everything gets signed, send the necessary paperwork to register them with the clerk's office, and by August 1st, that money, that new additional revenue will start coming in. They're just waiting on the paperwork and this resolution to be signed. So that's where we are with this, it's something we've already done, it's just the next step to redo, say yes, we really do want to do what we asked you to do for us. We are anticipating, uh, go down to tonight's discussion. We are anticipating that that's going to bring in $15,000 reoccurring every year. The mayor looked at me funny and wanted me to know how I came up with that number. And I nicely told him that my husband did the same thing when I found all his savings, so I'll give you an explanation of how I came up with that. This is the current rooms, campsites, lodging available at Nathan Bedford Forest. The number of rooms, the type of rooms, deluxe rustic lodge, they're average nightly rental. And the total that it would be if each one of those rooms were rented one night, if they were 100% occupied for one night. The hotel motel fee collected on each one of those rooms for a one, one night, everything occupied, are these numbers here, the 5%. I assumed a third of a year occupancy, which I think is very conservative, given what's going to, given how folks are going to start coming out more now when all this lifts and camping seems to be in no thing. I think we're looking at a very conservative number when I put 15,000. At a third of a year occupancy, 121 days, that's $16,000 in that, in that hotel motel tax that can be expected. So, that's where we are with that, that's how I ended up assuming the $15,000 number. Being conservative with this, and even more so with the spreadsheet that I gave you. That played out over 20 years as $300,000 additional money you'll see in your hotel motel tax collections. So that's the resolution I need you to vote on and pass tonight. I also wanted to give you an update on two new things. In March you also passed the Pulpwood Audit Resolution Request, that's still pending in the General Assembly, we'll have to re-request it in January again. It's one of those things that they just didn't address a whole lot of county issues with COVID and how limited they decided to be with their time in Nashville. So, it didn't not pass because of county, it just wasn't something pressing that they felt the need to push through, and quite honestly, I felt the hotel motel tax was the, we needed to get that in and going. So, with the audit, that will allow a three-year look back when passed, so we'll be able to make up this time, well, without any effort, once that, that gets put in. This hotel motel tax, I thought was more important because it's revenue, we could realize right now. The third thing, I spoke with the mayor earlier, while we're not going to reveal the sources now, we have identified another new source. It will be a one-time month, though we're anticipating about $82,000 coming in for that, going to the general fund. It won't be categorized, it will be unallocated funds. As that gets closer to realization, we'll identify from up in number, but that's, I think we're pretty good with that estimation right now. And then, since I was not here in March, I did want to go back and just revisit and reconfirm that the only thing we did pass as a recommendation, that was recommended to you in March, was a general litigation tax increase of $50. It's still on the table, you can still take it up at any time, or we can reintroduce it at any time. As a reminder, there was a $50 increase on general litigation, for those going through the court systems, it is a department-generated revenue, this is not something that's on your general tax papers. This is only for those that utilize the court systems, and this money would be allocated towards capital improvement, jail, courthouse, those type things, so it would stay allocated to that and could offset any of your general fund dollars that you put in there, should you choose to revisit that at any time, I'll be glad to bring that back up and reexamine it again, because we'll calculate the numbers to it in case things change based on the placement. With that, I'm going to pause for any questions, and at the end of that, if we could, since we're at board, go ahead and pick up that resolution, so I can be sure that it passes before I leave and start my auto work tomorrow.
Go ahead, Ms. Kay.
For the 3rd district, on this Pulpwood tax proposal that you're working on, what is the tax rate per ton?
That has not been something I've looked into, the issue problem for me was, we can't even find out what's, what, we can't be assured of what's being processed right now, so until we can get an accurate number on that, I, it just wasn't in my purview to look at that at the moment.
Okay, one other question, on this $50 litigation tax, how much more revenue will that bring in, opposed to what we're getting now?
The increase in revenue would be $73,444.20 a year, based on current court volume, that's additional revenue, so over, and I estimated it out for a 10-year project, so that'd be $734,442. And this is not compounded, so it's something you set aside in your interest-bearing account, I'm not taking that into account, this is just flat-out dollars coming in.
So, 75,000 dollars a year on the increase on the litigation?
Correct. And that's just based on current collection, your current collection rates? If at some point we discuss ways to enhance your collection rate, which there is some possibility of having that discussion at another point, you could see that increase, because I do think there's some possibilities there as well, we just haven't got to the point of discussing that.
Okay, one other question, if you're at liberty to say, and if you can't, that's okay, the 80 or $82,000 that you were talking about of one-time collection?
That's all I can say.
Okay. Any further, yes, Ms. Dana?
Of that 82, are you going to get 50% of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we aren't going to see the 80, so we're only going to see 40.
Correct.
Yes, Ms. Roseanne?
I have a question, when you go back to the hotel motel tax on the campsites? Is it not still that they're required to count 30 days before they're charged hotel motel?
The 30-day you're referring to is if they stay over 30 days, the sales tax has to be refunded to them. I don't know if that applies to the local hotel motel tax or not, I think it does, my apologies for saying that, because that makes it not a camping, it makes it a temporary living, so if it stays over 30 days, they are to collect it up until that point, and if they go over 30 days, then it is refunded back. And they reflect that in their return that they, that they get as well.
Okay, how do they keep up with campers when they come in? Are they supposed to register before they go to the campsite?
Yes.
And that's just on state property?
Correct. That, that 30-day applies to anything that collects tax, any of your hotel hotels, you got, I know in some of the counties, some of the hotels have basically turned it to temporary housing, where they do have long-term, short-term stays, meaning it's just, it's where they live week by week.
Okay, so I might be wrong, that campsite was not, you weren't just talking about, like, the state park, you're talking about anywhere in Benton County?
What, the recovery we're talking about here is simply your state park, you're already collecting the hotel motel. This one was being, was missed, not missed, it had been left out by definition in your private act. So we've come back, added that in, which is standard in all the other counties that have state parks, so they now will start collecting that. And it's going to apply to the cabins, their RV sites, their campsites, anything that meets the definition of lodging in your private act. And you have very few.
Sir, I can't hear anything, anyone to say?
You're way too far, Galvin Rose. The power works out, turn something over there, maybe you can hear better. We're still trying to get the tax in the park motel tax. Maybe you can hear better now, let's try again.
Okay. What would you like me to repeat, ma'am?
Can you hear Mary?
Mary?
Yes, I can hear it there, but I didn't hear anything said.
Oh, God.
We're all in masks, so it's going to be kind of hard.
I know.
Here we go.
Mary, the biggest thing that was discussed here with my presentation, I gave an update and new numbers, so there's been additional reoccurring revenue that's been realized, and tonight's vote.
Yes.
Tonight's vote that's needed is to re-vote for a resolution that asks the state to change your private act, so that this hotel motel tax will now apply to the state parks and that collection can start.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And regarding that, the anticipation is that state tax will go, that collection of that will go into effect by no later than August 1st. We could see it earlier, but we will start seeing it August 1st.
Question. Doug Bickers, 4th district. The hotel motel tax we're putting on as far as state parks are concerned, are we basically going to be on the equal footing with other state parks?
Yes, sir.
As charges are concerned?
Yes, sir. There was a, the definition, these private acts for the hotel motel tax came about 1984, roughly, was when the General Assembly approved it and the counties started implementing it. There was no template, so whatever the first one that came out is basically what everybody started adopting and mimicking. There was a template, the state just never weighed in on the wording of it, and when somebody questioned, the first person to question about a state park, they said, "Well, you failed to define the state in there," even though it defines every other kind of entity. So, at some point past 84, counties had to, if they were doing a new private act for the hotel motel, they got it wrong. We just didn't go back and correct ours. So, that's what this is doing, is going back and correcting what the state said sometime after 1984, needed to be the wording in your private act in order for any state-owned entity that had lodging for that to apply.
I just want to make sure that citizens that were using Nathan Bedford Forest that park would not be charging a higher fee if someone goes to, like, Paul Creek Falls that park?
Yes, sir, until today, they were being charged a smaller fee.
And I would also say that in other counties, it's higher, you know, it's whatever that local body that has a state park in it would be, but ours would be with the county rate, which is 5%, and I've been to places where it's been 12 or 15%. So our hotel, our occupancy tax is, is very standard and low compared to.
Any further, Ms. Fair, any other questions?
Including what I was up for that.
Any questions, any further, Ms. Donna? If not, I want to ask you to suspend the rules of order, she's got to travel, and I, nobody comes in further in the agenda, but I want to go ahead and move into it, ask you the motion to suspend the rules of order?
Motion.
Ms. Dana?
Second.
Second? Having so, all in favor, say aye.
Everybody's got the resolution, occupancy tax resolution?
The only number on it, is it going to be eight?
It'd be the, it should have been brought up in under, other, any other business, but I found in one more that I'd like to, while we're in that, other business, we'll get it out of the way right here. And this is a resolution to approve amendment to the private act authorized in Benton County to levy an occupational tax, whereas the Benton County Board of County Commissioners has respectfully voted to request the State General Assembly to amend the Benton County Private Act of 1994, Chapter 189, to add to the state government own hotel lodging campground entities that must be collected and remitted to the county occupancy tax. Take a roll call, please.
Wait, you're saying a roll call to suspend the rules first?
I want to know what they're spinning to.
Okay, is this to suspend the rule?
It is.
This one's to suspend the rules, so we're in a roll call. Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Talia Dye?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall? Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Jenny Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Peeks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I need a motion to, to approve the resolution.
Motion.
Motion. Pass it, Jenny, second. All in favor?
Number.
Roll call.
Roll call. The second.
Ms. Kelly. Question? Anybody else speak?
I would just say, if General Lamon's terms, we're closing a loophole. This is the basic way to look at it.
And if I could clarify a comment that I made, I reference 1984, as the resolution says, this began in 1994, so I, my apologies, I want the record to be straight, but I should have said 1994 in the formulation of this.
Thank you, Ms. Roseanne?
Well, I was going to comment on that, because during the time that I was counting first, which I started in 94, we found the loophole, and we approached the county commissioner, and they discussed going back and changing the private act and trying to collect it, but at that time, it hadn't really been done that many times, so the county commissioner chose not to move forward with it. So it had been discussed in the past.
Thank you, any further? If not, we'll go to roll call.
Angie Pahn?
Walking with each other with the roll call, I can read your board.
Angie, we're voting on the tax, for the hotel tax for the parks. We're actually.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, thank you. Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Talia Dye?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Jenny Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Peeks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion, Katie, hotel tax passed.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Donna. It's all about, well, we got the suspended rules, I will go ahead and, we'll finish that up, maybe we're done in that section right there, there's one in here for the, sponsored by the Benton County Labor Department, whereas the Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development has a reimbursable tourism enhancement grant that was developed to help the community improve their tourism asset and increase related economic impact, and where the maximum reimbursement grant amount would be up to 75,000, adding 95 to 5 match due to Benton County being a Tier Four. Mr. Mary, would you like to explain on this, so we've always suspended, we're going the same thing?
I'll just say that the reason we didn't get this in the package was because of, we had to get our application in first, and they just opened this, you know, resolution up, or not this resolution, but the application up, and had a January 15 deadline, so once we got the application in, this is part of the application process, it's up to the governing body supports pursuant to it. We plan on leveraging this grant towards improvements to our passing time in the Lord of the Park. And I believe the 5% match is 3,750.
Any questions? We're done, approve the suspended rules?
He has his own microphone, that one for you to vote on.
Roll call, a roll call, are you voting on the approval?
No, we've got to get it on the floor first.
I'm sorry.
I, I have to make a motion.
I have a motion, Ms. Dana?
I'm sorry.
Have a second, Katie? Take a roll call. More? Yes, ma'am.
I've talked to people in my district and out of my district, and they have concerns about spending money at the Patrick Memorial, because it's a dangerous place to be, and I just wonder what kind of, how are you going to keep the drug dealers in them down there, in the remote areas that it's in?
I wouldn't mind if this grant possibly lets us put lighting up there, maybe that will help, and sure we get some control or coverage up there, and I think it has been in the past where a lot of people have complained of drug actions or not being seen up there.
And there are needles down there and everything, and this is not a safe place to go.
Anybody else have anything further on that? Yes, Ms. Dana?
I would like to ask the sheriff, how much drug is down there, and, you know, give us an idea on, you know, you know more about the location than any of us, and calls and public and all that, can you?
We have made a few arrests out of that area, and we've also found lots of drug peril for them in there, control on a larger basis. We don't have any way, unless you just drive up on it, there's a couple of places out there that you can pull a car in, and they know that, you can pull it down in there, and the car can't be seen that you drive all the way down into city. And there's a lot of drug activity out there, and we have, we have made some arrests out there, saying there's any worse than what it's been, yes, no. The only thing I can think of to fix that is a camera system, and I don't know what that would cost, but we'll learn this back at the sheriff's office, we're tied up in motion there. And we don't have all the out, we don't have to do it. We've got three cars running, covering 741 miles a county, three cars on the time of the night, so, you know, there's, they're usually tied up, busy and running, and they're controlling it nightly, but occasionally we'll make some drug arrests, but every time we go down into city, they litter the road down, clean it up, they find a lot of drug traffic over in different places located within that park.
Could it be closed up at night?
Could be, but there's still, I mean, you could block them from driving out in there, we could do that, but, I mean, it's still a good remote location, which is no worse than old logging trails and stuff like that that we might have on, ride back in logging trails in the park, and sometimes just park the car and walk about eight or a mile back up the road, and have a logging trail somewhere, but they can sit out there and do the drugs. So, I don't know what the answer is for to stop it from being there, but if there is a, there is drug activity there, and it's like there is in the city park, and in the, in the, all these other areas, city park, Big Sandy, camp, but anywhere that you can pull in there, two cars to hide, you're pretty much going to have it. I don't, I wish I could tell you, I had answers for stopping it, but hoping it would probably be the best thing, at least they wouldn't pull down in there. Our, the camera system, I think it would probably be pretty expensive for it to move back to the sheriff's office. I would say if you could move back, you could ask your IT man, probably move it back to a follow or something up there, anytime there's motion in that area, but even then, how long's it going to take the car to get out there, and usually the drug deals are not set there over five minutes.
Go ahead, Ms. Doug.
Doug Bickers, 4th district commissioner. I stand in strong support for this grant application, I think we've got a tremendous amount of opportunity in Benton County, in developing the passing plan park there, the user venue, I think they need to be a tremendous asset in Benton County, and I stand on the active corporate district that it's one.
I'll also say that the best way to cure the problem is to invest in it. It's underinvestment, we have no lives, we have no gains, and so, just in this past year, we have finally run electricity into the park. Before, before this last year, we didn't even have money to, I allocated money for electricity, we were pulling from a solar panel to run the kiosks. I look at it from the investment opportunity, that tourism is one of the biggest industries in Benton County. If we're going to have a park, why neglect it financially? Why not put money into it?
Why not ensure that there's electric and there's light? Why not ensure that there's a gate there? You know, we acquired a property adjacent to the park for parking. That will greatly enhance our ability to draw crowds there. Crowds themselves are deterrent to illegal activity. So, the greater we can grow tourism, the more opportunity we have to keep crime out of it. And actually turn it into a venue that it was meant to be. A memorial for a tragic event. But also, this is a tourism enhancement grant. So, this is to go towards elements that bring more people to the park. So, we're looking at building an earthen amphitheater with a stage, with additional lighting and electricity. We're gonna have probably an electronic gate. We're gonna improve the parking lot. We know that we've put seventy-five thousand dollars into the park mental already, which is washing away with every big rain that comes. So, even if it wasn't this tourism enhancement grant, we really need to invest in this park. It's a county property. And just like a lot of our buildings, we cannot continue to neglect the taxpayers' investment. You know, and they, if the taxpayers are investing in that park, it's our job to take care of it and to ensure that we take care of the security of it.
Mr. Mayor, I will pull it out also. We just have ninety-five five credits left there, which we, the numbers can't get any better for our county.
Right, right. And, so, part of that money, and we actually budgeted another tw- additional twenty-five thousand dollars. This is a hundred thousand dollar project that we're looking at. And, but we're gonna improve that parking lot. And we're gonna improve the gate system, lock people out at, maybe at sunset. We're gonna probably put up a couple more streetlights. We're also going to build an entertainment venue that's going to bring people to Benton County. Tourism dollars, sales taxes, hotel motel taxes. This is gonna be a moneymaker for Benton County in the end. So, but when it comes to the drug problems and crime, that's everywhere. And that's not just the park, that's also on the court square. It could be, it could be a county property anywhere in Benton County. To me, the best way to rectify a problem is to put the money in the park that prevents those avenues from people just hanging out, especially after dark.
Anybody got anything further? If not, we'll have a roll call though.
Angie Hahn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Gary Firth?
Yes.
Sunny Hall? St. Paul?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Peeks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Planet?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion, Kevin. Thank you for the part, great. I'm putting it down to the citizen forum. I have no signature here as to speak. Let's see your name, citizen forum back there. If not, line item seven, commissioners forum. Who would like to speak? Any commissioner got anything? Any of you commissioners out there, Sunny? Any of y'all like to speak, Ms. Mayor? Angie? Caitlin? Nobody speaking in the forum? Great night. I'm putting it down, line item eight, county mayor. Give you a time, I don't wish to shake that something right there.
There was one issue that just came up and I wanted to...
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Playa Dye, I don't think we approved the agenda.
We suspended rules on that, but we'll head back to it.
Are we good now?
We'll come back to that. Go ahead.
There was some news I had gotten on Friday that I wanted to talk to the commission about. Of course, it's related to a new lawsuit, so this is really not the forum.
Let me make sure that you have...
Yeah.
Can y'all hear me, Sean? Your attorney? Angie, can you hear him speaking?
I can hear him.
Can you hear me around?
You hear him now?
Okay. Of course, because of the forum, this is not the place to really talk about the facts of the case or anything like that. But I just generally wanna bring something up for everyone's attention and something you'll need to address. We have a new lawsuit last week. And it's a employment-related issue, related to the insurance. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because we received a, it's called a reservation rights letter. It's what we get from the insurance company on most of these cases. But on this one, it's a little bit unique. Because suffice it to say, if the allegations prove to be true, then basically, the insurance will not cover the damages, the liability. And the insurance company is recommending in their letter that the county attorney be associated with the insurance defense lawyers work together because of that scenario. Now, on a lawsuit like that, generally, these cases go to the insurance company and then the insurance company lawyers handle this. And I just kinda keep an eye on these cases to give you all updates, you know, a few times a year, things of that nature. But on this scenario, there, because of the allegations, because of insurance, there's an exclusion on the insurance that wouldn't cover it, that the county could be liable for the money, not just a deductible. I'm talking about dollar for dollar for this. That they're recommending that I associate with the lawyer to work together to defend the county in this case. And that amount is not, to do that is not set up in the normal budget that the budget committee approved, what we approved just last month, to do that. So, I wanted to just put that out there for the commission to need to address that. And we need to address it fairly quickly because when a lawsuit is filed, just general knowledge is, you have about thirty days to file an answer in response to that and get the word on the case. The case has already been out there for about a week. And so, we need to be moving on it quick for me to be associated with that other law firm. And as far as dollar-wise, just right now, it's just ballpark figures as far as just amount that I would recommend or point out to you all, to put in like twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars into some kind of fund to use for the defense right now. And then I can update you along the way in executive sessions about how that's going and apprise you of that information. This is something that just happened on Friday, so we need to, I need to know kinda where, what, how to handle the situation. If there's any questions, I can answer them if you have any. I don't wanna discuss the facts just because it's a public forum. It's something we would normally do in executive session. So, I don't want anyone really speaking about the case that can be brought into the litigation.
I think you're letting us be aware of it. Because there's something we need to aware. That way, the costs are, when you see it coming up, be very much what he's saying on his case. I don't have you dodging. To, you know, like you said, most time our insurance, they investigate doing. And then you're free of them. But right now, they're gonna involve him in it. So, it's gonna be a cost other than just beating their meetings. I think right now, we've got twenty thousand dollars for the year for his expense to come into the meetings. So, being aware, there's any charges, what he's talking about. And thank you again, so you're letting us know that.
But that, which currently is coming to meetings and handling other issues. It's not just the meetings, it's handling a lot of things. But this case in and of itself, it would take up a budget like that. Defending a case like this would take that budget of itself. So, I just wanna make you aware of that so that you all can address it however you need to do so.
Do you have any idea what amount that, or taking my amount, is on there?
No, that's why I'm saying it's an estimate. I have no idea. I think it could go on for quite some time. I mean, it's an employment matter, a, basically a wrongful termination type case. And so, I don't have any idea how far it would go out. Typically, what I do is I tell you, like on the front, I'm telling you to put some kind of amount, like a reserve type. And then I come in and keep you apprised of the situation as we go along. Because this would be a case that I'm a lot more active into because of the insurance situation. So, I would just need to come in.
What's it taste? And they are, you're angry there.
No, not, not in this forum, no. I mean, that's what I was talking about. Anything we talk about the facts of the case, I'm basically including a bunch of people that, into the case that really shouldn't be involved in it. But I can address that during, you know, an executive session if necessary. I would just say, there are a lot of, there are a lot of cases that never go to trial. You know, our trust, our insurance trust will settle that case, and it never goes to trial. Due to the nature, the sensitivity of this type of case, you've kinda gotta be prepared that, you know, the trust is gonna pay out so much. But due to the nature of this case, it's not limited to what that trust will pay out. It's, it's a subjective type of an award that goes to a peer, you know, jury type, you know, peer of jurors. And so, we have to be prepared. And a lot of this is to prepare us from his end, from his side. But then there's also the risk of what happens if there's an award greater than the insurance trust. So, this is one of those preemptive actions. The best way to do is have your attorneys on it early, have them working it early. And so, he doesn't work for free, and he's got other clients and things. And so, we've got insurance, we've got legal representation from our one of you outside of that provided by the insurance trust. And this is also the insurance company putting us on notice on the front end that this is a possibility.
So, this district, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Questions, has the department or office in question, they need to work the litigation?
Yes.
Yes.
I, it just happened, I just got the letter on Friday and I told, well, I don't wanna talk about who the parties are or anything, but it's new information, basically. It just occurred.
This just happened, Ms. Rochelle, and he's got stuff probably sent out. He may not, whoever's the recipient may not have got it yet. He just got this news. Are you okay with that? Anybody else?
No, I just wanna let you know, so, I mean, it just came up. So, I needed to let you know since I was here and for you all to address it and how you wanna handle the situation.
I think the deal, if you were, was a tight game, or you wanted to go with the room that way.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we want to consider an executive session right now?
Well, we have to.
That's up to the, Mr. Mayor. That's up to y'all, if y'all like it, we're gonna do that.
It's an argument.
Ma'am?
It, typically, we have to give the notice and things in advance when you're gonna do that. You don't, you don't just do it on the spot.
We have to do that before I guess.
Whatever y'all wanna do. And the action would be, if the budget, I would refer to the, to the budget committee first. You know the budget better than anybody. Do you want to make an amendment to allocate twenty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars for this, you know, budgeting in the legal side? And if he doesn't use it, we just return it? Or that's something for us to ponder? And we can do it tonight, and we can come back to that.
That would have to be done through a resolution.
No, I mean, we can make a motion right now, couldn't we?
That's an allocation of funds from outside of twenty-five.
So, we would need to draw.
That would have to come through a resolution. I don't know if we're talking about it before we do that.
I think we do it next, as far as that goes, our next meeting, one in front of, that he is gonna be spending. He's got money in their pocket to last.
The only thing I'd say, if you're gonna wait for the next meeting, you better be quickly about it because you have thirty days to answer, thirty days is running right now. So, if you decide to do that, let me know in advance because I can't do anything on the ground.
I can, I can, I can rise and you go ahead and we'll...
Well, in a sense, we've got enough to cover right now that we've got money budgeted in that amount. I could just use what we, the normal money is separate from this, to use that for that. If I know that the commission wants me to represent.
We need to do the place through a resolution in August meeting.
But I would like a motion or something, that you do want me to go ahead and add on. Because I don't, I can't say I'm gonna represent and file any kind of notice saying I'm representing the county and pull out.
I'd like to ask a motion for that, to put it on. Have a motion, McKenna, I need a second. This is the, a lot of cake, it's a company that's here for the money. Twenty to twenty-five thousand, what you have to put in. I have second, I give you further. Roll call, please. Any discussion, anything further, might add to that. May I? Come back.
What's this motion exactly?
This motion is, is what he asked. He said we need to probably put twenty-five thousand dollars.
Wait, I'm not asking for any money here.
He not asking for money.
I just, I just feel okay that I'm gonna move in on behalf of the county. You all can figure out if you're running that with a resolution. But for me to know that I'm in inter appearance on behalf of the county in this case, I don't know that this commission wants me to do that. Now, y'all can figure out the money next month.
I'm gonna reiterate that. All we're doing right now, we are, that we are aware of him representing this case. The money will come up in August or whatnot, we find. We just need you to say the vote that you are aware of what he's gonna be doing. And there will be charges for what he's doing, he's, you want you to be aware of.
Basically, you're asking me to represent the county in this particular lawsuit is all I'm asking.
Okay, that's perfect. I just wanted to make sure that it was not a motion to appropriate any funds because we would have to do that via representing.
Nothing about the, nothing about the funds. I will take your advice.
Anything further? If not, we'll have a roll call, so.
Angie Hahn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Gary Firth?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Peeks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers? Mary Powers? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Planet?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion, Kevin. Everybody's aware of what's going on.
Can I ask?
Let's, you go ahead and talk.
Can I ask Dana a question?
Sure.
Why would you go against that? Just, just wanna know.
Because we haven't hired him. We as a commission did not hire him to represent us. So, I feel it's wrong.
I thought we did.
The, the other, the comment I was gonna say, I added, if this voting no, you run the risk of the default judgment being entered against the county with no defense whatsoever. There is nobody else right now. But I, I just understand, well, some would understand that reasoning. But the risk to the county at this point will be extremely high. And you go to a certain committee or something like that afterwards. But without any employer being involved at this point, there'd be, you know, all liability against the county for a huge amount of money. First of all, I want to clarify that there's a misnomer that you have to approve the county attorney. I can contract the county attorney, or the commission can contract the county attorney. But once, one or both of those actions are made, he becomes the county attorney. Your vote is simply a ratification, your thumbs up or thumbs down. But it does not mean he is not the county attorney. I have a privilege to appoint a county attorney just like I can file with insurance laws. So, it's part of my executive privilege. Now, we get into the habit, of course, we want to buy into the commission. But there's this misnomer around the community thinking that he's not the county attorney simply because you don't vote. As soon as you approve twenty thousand dollars a year into his line item in the budget, you have approved my ability to retain him as our county attorney. And I have signed a contract with him that he will be our county attorney so long as I'm the county attorney. And I have signed a contract with him that he will be our county attorney so long as I'm the county mayor. So, so there's, just because you did not vote on it does not mean he cannot represent it and it does not mean that he is not the county attorney. But you can ask CPAS, you can ask, uh, Charles Curtis, you can ask all of experts that we turn to and they'll support that particular position. Now, COVID-19, as most of you know, uh, is beginning to rise in the community. We see it's rising throughout the state, throughout the country. Uh, because the Tennessee Supreme Court ruled that all court proceedings will require a face mask environment. We did not want to create further confusion inside the courthouse by not, some not having face masks, people up on the second floor having it, intermingling and all that type of stuff. So I would ahead and made the policy that says you're in the courthouse, it's a face mask only environment. Doesn't mean that someone comes in and gets kicked out. It just means we take a protective posture, we stop them at the doors, we simply say, how can we help you? We work, work on from the car. But right now, the county courthouse has become a face mask only environment. If we continue to see a rise in the cases, then we may go to county buildings and county properties being a face mask only environment. Uh, that's one of those things that you just stay tuned for. Uh, as you know, we've got, uh, I've given each of y'all the county mayor notes that I've had, you can read them, there's no reason for me to read them every word or anything like that. I presented them to the clerk for, should have been in your packet, but here's your copy right here. And some, some came earlier and got their package because, uh, we had them out a little bit sooner due to the Fourth of July holiday we had to have them out. Uh, one highlight I just want to make is that, uh, you know, the county or the state comptroller has certified our budget. And that's the value of getting your budgets passed on time and, and getting it up to the state comptroller, this is probably the earliest we have ever had our county budget certified. You know, I think this was, uh, dated July of the end. Also, uh, just want to say we've had multiple disasters from October to now with freight line wins, tornadoes. Of course, we've got the COVID, uh, disaster hit us right now, but, you know, we secured a, a consultant to handle our FEMA FEMA claims. And that's Ms. Norma Eadie, she was here, she met with the highway department today along with DMA. But just since we have secured, uh, her services, just in errors from the filings that we have made, she has corrected ten thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and fifteen cents. So, so that is the value of bringing in those with knowledge and expertise. And unfortunately, we have, we're currently working disaster still in the progress. As she may find us more monies that were missed. But that's why we hired her, because this is what she does for a living. It's just like we'd hire Ms. Donna Barrett to be our revenue witness. They have the expertise to know how to find us monies that we have been missing in the past. The, uh, uh, let's see. Today, we received, uh, very good news from the Benton, Decatur, Prefectural Sewer District. You know, we've been trying to keep you updated periodically as we, as we work on turning that model around. It has been a losing model for the county. The county has been paying roughly sixty thousand dollars in debt service towards this particular entity. Plus, the entity has been lacking capital to improve. Well, we began about twenty months ago in trying to turn around the financial model of the sewer district. It is now operating in the black and we are projecting anywhere from two hundred and two to two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of revenue for the sewer district. Hopefully, once it's on its feet, it will begin paying our note source, thereby saving the citizens of Benton County five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when you, I would encourage all of you to attend the Benton, Decatur Sewer District meetings. They're the third Friday of the month at eight-thirty a.m. We normally meet at, uh, North Forty Truck Stop. And, uh, but that's good news. That that was one of the failing models that was a drain and we could not expand the sewer capabilities of the interstate exit, which we know has huge potential. But just today, we received a letter, well, it's dated July fourteenth, of a letter of financial sufficiency. This was the last piece of the puzzle to be awarded, uh, basically a seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollar stake grant. Hundred percent paid. That will go in, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of that will go into the upgrade of the plant itself. We're gonna up, uh, upgrade the aerators, the electric capacity and that's four hundred thousand dollars for the sewer expansion line up Highway six forty-one towards Canton. So again, expanding that line, getting more customers onto that, uh, sewer, uh, line will reduce the unit costs, make it more affordable. It will also hopefully attract future commercial investment. So stay tuned because I believe there's more good news coming, uh, at the interstate. I think what, whether we're just, uh, they're announcing a forty-three room hotel down there that they're looking at, uh, at the interstate right now, so. Uh, that's still, uh, in the works, but that was presented to the board, uh, last Friday. Again, that's good news. The more investment we get at that interstate, the more revenue it brings to Benton County.
What's the name of the building coming?
It's, uh, Sleep Bend is the name of the motel that's coming in, that's what he said.
Was that on the Decatur?
It'd be Decatur, right across from Dottie's. What's really helped us more than anything on our sewer is since we've got involved. I don't know if a meeting, if the mayor ain't been at, and you did the Decatur candidate, mayor is there. But between the two and our engineer, Alton, he called, he presided, he put in the paperwork. I'm telling you, an engineer without him, you cannot make progress. It, you know, it's a cost to some to come, but what you receive is a lot better than what you started with. Seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is going to go a long way and that's free. And as such, providing we follow the rules and do what we're gonna do, we're definitely gonna do that, but it is really took a, a change. I think Mr. Kennedy's been there at a several of our meetings and he's seen the progress that's really took a place up there. It's a vital, it's, it's like an artery going to the county. It's, it's that vital that we keep that up because everything on the truck in, on our restaurants, motel, everything refers on that sewer, so it shuts down, they shut out. So we, we stay proactive on it and it's really moving good.
And we believe this is the first time it's ever been done because they saw that we were in, that we had a losing model. You know, that we had something that was going to continue to be a financial brand on the counties. It's also critical to economic development. So, so the state was very encouraged when we approached them with this particular, uh, complexity that we have. Uh, you don't learn sewer overnight, you don't learn wastewater and how to, how to turn the model around overnight. You've really got to invest yourself. But we believe this is the first time they've ever done this. So again, that's, that's to applaud the hard work of the, the, the board from Decatur and Benton County. Uh, we've also been granted access, uh, from the interstate. Uh, if it's not the first time, it's the second time that that has been, uh, granted, uh, to an entity like this. So, so we're encouraged about what the future of the interstate's gonna bring Benton County. But it starts with little things like sewer and I encourage all of y'all to get involved, attend the meetings and, uh, you know, learn it because it definitely impacts our financial line. If it saves our county five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of debt service, uh, then it's a win-win for everyone.
Shout, you have it, if anything, you'd like to say, is that we'll move out of this. Mayor, you got anything further? If not, I'm gonna move us back to number five, approval of the gentle. Need a motion?
No.
Mr. Kennedy, a motion, second, McKenna. Roll call please. Any discussion on these, I, we got that out there for this other, if not.
We can do, we can do a voice.
Well, I've got people, we've been doing, I'm asking you to have a roll call, so that's what we've done. Been doing it all along, so.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Playa Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers. Mary Powers. Mary, are you there?
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes, I'm here.
Come on out, Mary.
Ward Plant.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries, thank you. Nine out of nine, approval of the minutes. Have a motion, Ms. Dana, second, McKenna. Roll call.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Playa Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill. Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
It was not a hill.
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plant.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
All carries. All carries. Nine out of ten, report of the public utility. Motion. Motion, Ms. Dana, second, McKenna. Any discussion? If not, roll call please.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Playa Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall. Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks. Daryl Hicks.
Yes, I think I already did it, but somebody in the background noticed.
Somebody got the phone, please, immediately.
Can everybody use their phones?
Thank you.
He said yes, Daryl. Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plant.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
All carries. Item number eleven, resolution to declare an enclosed trailer obtained by the sheriff's department from the LESO program as surplus property and allow disposable per the sheriff's discretion.
I agree.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Angie. I mean, not Angie, but, uh, Dana. Patton. Any discussion on the trailer? Yes, Mr. Sheriff.
I'd like to say we'd like to pull this, even though it says it's a discretion, we'd like to give that out there to the, uh,
Solid Waste Department.
It's something that they could use and we'll just donate it down over to them. And, uh, Mr. Hopper had said it, if they would look at it and if they could use it, it's not, uh, we're not gonna be losing any money or anything on it, so I'd like to just go and get over to them. I believe it would be, uh, it'd help a lot.
As a record, should we go ahead and what we're doing and didn't you just make that donation to him? Would that be fair?
Yeah.
Same area. We go ahead and what we're doing, did you do any?
That's where we're going to do it.
Yes, sir, did you go ahead and give it to them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Roll call please.
Did everybody get that?
Angie, y'all copy what we're talking?
Did you get what they did on person, what you did about?
What we're doing, the sheriff has a, a trailer that he would like to, he's gonna donate it to the sanitation department. What he's gonna do, but if it's gonna put, but we're gonna go ahead and take a roll call on it. But everything y'all said done, he's not selling it, he's gonna give it to, to the sanitation department. Just need to clear it out there in records.
Okay.
All righty, roll call.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Playa Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall. Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plant.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Item item twelve, resolution to declare the Ford Hewitt Packard printers in the trustee office as surplus property and allow disposable per the trustee discretion.
Awe.
Of a motion, Ms. Dana, second, McKenna. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call please.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Playa Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall. Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers. Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plant.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Item item thirteen, resolution making a budget amendment to the twenty-twenty-one fiscal budget to remove the twenty-eight thousand increase for permission to pay and revert these funds back to the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund.
Awe.
Motion, Dana.
I agree.
Second by Fur.
Conversation.
Any discussion?
Right here.
Go ahead, Mr. Rock.
Chairman, I would like to point your question. If this resolution passes tonight, does that mean the two commissioners elected on Officer Seven will get the increase?
I don't think it comes through personally till the, till the next fiscal budget. Not, not the budget, but to the next, probably. That'd be good, we would, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I didn't hear the question. I didn't hear any comment.
Rocky was wondering if maybe it says the, the amount would be paid after the, being elected with the two commissioners who are running, which is Janet Hicken and Doug Victor, friends, who are, their assessment may be when they get paid the full amount.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I don't think so, okay?
Okay. Anyway, we're gonna have a roll call on this, no further discussion. Just want to.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Playa Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall. Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.[1768.02]
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Warren.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks. Daryl Hicks.
Yes, I can't hear you. Somebody got your earphone off.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Item out of fourteen, resolution budgeting funds in the amount of seventy dollars sixty cents received from the annual interest earned from the will and testament left by O'Nob W. Florence to help assist the project help with the Benton County electric system. The motion, Kenneth.
Yes.
Second.
Dana, second. Any discussions? No discussion. Roll call, please.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Polina Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall. Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Warren.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. It was the line item fifteen, resolution budgeting funds within the county quarter. Medical examiner budget in the amount of one seventy-five received from the state of Tennessee for the R O I fee in order for supplies and material to be purchased. The motion, motion by Dana. Second, Kenneth. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call, please.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Polina Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Warren.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Item item sixteen, resolution to appropriate funding in the amount of six thousand five hundred seventy-four oh seven from the litigation tax reserve and budget to the other public safety building improvement in order to update the cabling throughout the jail building.
Motion.
Motion by Patton. Who else? Mr. Vickers, second?
No, no discussion.
Oh, no, I have to get to the discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull that resolution and we're gonna add that in with the other camera system there. I think we'll just put it in and all we got in one night.
What did, what did they talk about? Is that cable wiring or what is it?
It's, it's to do with the entire cabling of the whole thing. It's actually part of what we've already discussed about the cameras and stuff. This would just be part of it.
Did you ever get your, your room for putting the, the supplies or the personnel stuff? Did you ever get that, that rack you were trying to build a hang up with everybody when they check it? You never have that bill? Sheriff has pulled in number sixteen, so it's been pulled. That moves it now to seven, item seventeen, appointed a notary, or notarries. We'll have Ms. Wanda call the names out.
We have three. Heather Snyder, Deborah Workman, and Sandy Bridle.
There's a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Janet. Second by Patton. Any discussion? More names called? If not, have a roll call.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Polina Dye.
Yes.
Gary Fur.
Yes.
Sunny Hall. Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hicken.
Yes.
Roseanne Warren.
Yes.
Daryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Item out of eighteen, any other business? Has anybody got anything to say? Any commissioners have anything?
Question.
Yes, Mr. Rock.
Question for Brother Sean Johnson. Is there any new information on the severance taxes? The, on the severance tax, depending on the Tennessee Department of Revenue, their in-house counsel, I spoke with them last month about our position. I sent them research and they said they would verbally agree with me. They said they would send me someone in writing saying that they agreed with my position. Then I sent them. I don't know why. They, they may not want to read their writings. They verbally told us, I wanted to know where they were going to be at. Thank you.
Anything further? If, if not.
If there's another piece related to that, I'm trying to make sure we don't make the same mistake again. I, when I was researching that issue, I found out that the county had, had to reimburse two companies for that. So I'm talking to the Department of Revenue about how to collect that money through the county or through the Department of Revenue. I believe it would be through Nashville to keep that from happening again. So the county had probably about a hundred thousand dollars. We had to refund two companies to, to some issue.
Kenneth, would you step up that mic? I can hear you better, I think. Will you come up there? Go ahead and cheer, Sheriff.
Commissioners, today, just today, we had an air conditioning unit go out. The air conditioning unit is ten-year-old and Fuller came over and got it fixed. As you know, it's very hot out, so it was heating up pretty fast. They've got it running on a temporary basis. He gave me some quotes so that we could move forward and maybe get this thing fixed. Oh, it's got to be fixed. But to repair the unit would cost nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. To replace the whole unit, and it is ten-year-old, is twelve thousand nine hundred. And I asked his recommendation. He said, I strongly suggest you get it fixed as soon as possible. I would replace the whole unit. It's around thirty-two hundred dollars difference to replace the whole unit. So that's what we're looking at. It just went out this morning. He said if there's any questions, he'd be glad to answer it. But he said it could go out tonight. In fact, he asked me, has it quit yet? And I said, no. When I called him back, it's still running. And he said, well, I don't, I can't guarantee it's gonna run today or it's gonna run a week. It could run a month. He said, but I would suggest that you go ahead and get it fixed. But his suggestion was replace the whole unit with only three thousand dollars difference. So I want to see what you want to do on that because I guess that would come out of jail litigation money or maintenance money, whatever. But we, we do need to get it fixed. It's running right now.
If you do, I don't know what the commissioner goes to say, but I'd like to ask you also to make me call Mr. Palin, Phil Palin, let him give you a bid also. We have two bids on it.
Okay. I can call him in the morning if it, if it quits between now and me getting the whole thing. I'll call him first thing in the morning. But if it quits between then. What he has told me on this unit, he said that they have one in stock. And if we order it before somebody else does, he said otherwise, we're probably looking at thirty days to get another one in. That's what he told me today. I wouldn't thought, thought it would take that long, but that's what he told me this afternoon. So I told him I would present it tonight and see what we could come up with.
Mr. Dan.
Uh, they had Fuller. He's, he's done a lot of work for us and so has Mr. Palin both. And I, just as long as we can keep the thing going and get it fixed. But he just said, with it being ten-year-old, I think I'd go ahead and replace the whole thing.
Can I respond to that, Sheriff?
Yes.
Just what you're talking about.
Yes.
I will remind everybody that our previous Mary Barnett one put up, air conditioning unit, a price tag of four hundred fifty thousand dollars in this building. He had Rusty Fuller come before the budget committee, he had Rusty Fuller come before the property committee, and Rusty Fuller announced that there was a hole in the ductwork in this building that contained carcinogens. That means it caused his cancer. That people on the treetops, people in this courthouse scared, frightened. We had Collison from Jackson, an engineering firm, come up here and they're the ones that give us the two or three options of what we could do to cool heat this courthouse aside getting that Samsung meeting from China with a four hundred fifty thousand dollar price tag. After Collison looked at the ductwork, it was confirmed there wasn't a hole in the ductwork. There was no hole. There was no carbonic acid. That wasn't true. That would make us sorry. Once we accepted the job that was gonna be done here in this courthouse, had a much smaller price tag, Fuller, Ethan Coogan got the bid. The low bid. It was awarded to them. Weeks later, Fuller walked off out of the building. He didn't want it. He took his hands up higher and thought he did. So we give it to the next lowest bid. After communicating with the engineering firm in Jackson that oversaw the Ethan Coogan job, they answered my question. My question was wanting Fuller to walk, Fuller walked away from his job. Fuller went to the engineers and they announced, I will three or four more re-raps on this plan. A re-rap means you're gonna be able to charge them more money. The engineering firm told him there will be no more re-raps. This is the way it's gonna be built. That's when Rusty turned around and walked out of the door and dropped it off. I apologize, Sheriff, but that's how I feel about Rusty Fuller.
Yes, sir. He's just the one who worked on it today. I don't, I don't care who fixes it. I just, I have to have it running. There's several units up there and this is just, we've had continuous trouble with them for years. And now it's gotten even worse. But this, this unit's ten-year-old, so it's held up pretty good. But that's what he told me today and wouldn't take me long to write a book about what I know about air conditioning. So.
What section is it cooling, Sheriff? Is that you?
It's cooling, A pod section back there where the majority of our inmates.
Inmates and your office and the whole jail, I hear.
Uh, that's, it's, this is the one back toward the back. It, it covers that area back there with the inmates. So. It got hot real fast. We put fans up and pulled from the other area till they could get it fixed. But they did get it fixed pretty fast today.
Yes, Mr. Dan.
We have that air conditioning period. It's too hot. It's gonna be that way for the next two months. So we need to do something. I don't care who gets it, but somebody needs to have it in place.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And I was, I was also gonna say, just to cover this in case we have to go to the new one, we probably, I'll turn this over to Greg because we've replaced, we've replaced a lot of units over the last two years.
Yeah.
And, and so he's got a good system down. I'll have him obtain the, the three quotes, you know what I mean, which we've got one already.
Yeah.
So we just need to go, maybe get a couple more quotes and now just decide either or, you know, the new one or what we're replacing. I'll ask Greg, Greg Fucker to get on, you know, because he's our.
Is he gonna do that tomorrow or do I need to call anybody?
I'll, I'll get with him.
Okay.
If not, I'll have you call him. But it's, I'll ask him right now.
Yeah, we just, I just wanna try to get something done before it shuts down because it'll take a few minutes.
Question, the same as how the sheriff, Mary, you can answer it more. You can answer it. Would it be in order for us to appropriate the money for this new conditioner right now in December, August, November? We've got money. Well, we've got money and capital, you know, building maintenance and things like that. If we needed to get a, a quick deal, we could. And like Phil said, we probably need the resol, go through the resolution format. And so what we may do is rock Peter to pay Paul. If we see that we gotta do something, we'll do it. And then we'll just come back in August and replace. We'll just have to replace the location.
Mr. Victor.
I just will comment, if you're only talking around three thousand dollars difference between a ten-year-old unit that's gonna be repaired for parts or two or buy a brand-new one or more, my thoughts are we need to look at the rate.
That's what I feel like.
The unit he's talking about is a York and that's what we've had throughout the building. So it's replacing what we've, what we've had.
Which I'm not a big York fan, but you know, of course, government, you go with the best bid and who puts for, I, I'm, we've got York on this, on, for the courthouse. I find that it doesn't, it doesn't last as long. So, but you know what? That's what competition's for and what the bid process is for. We'll take care of it, Sheriff.
Somebody just let me know in the morning. I'll know what we're gonna do. And if, if it goes out, I'll, I'll contact you and let you know it's going down.
Tell him and then let him tell you. That's what you gotta do. You're gonna get your air.